Moving back to order, please. If you didn't vote for it, you don't have to sign it. We are at Action Items, Section C1. Director Geary, would you do the seconding of the motions? And then, let's have Director Pinkham. You need to read the motion and Director Pinkham can second it, if you would please, kind sir. Action Items, number one. I set it up and then we go with the paragraph there, will work just fine. General Counsel just nodded his agreement, thank you sir. Acceptance of gift of playground improvements at John Hay Elementary. This came to Ops December 7th for...
Consideration.
So I move for approval of acceptance of gift of playground improvements at John Hay Elementary. Approval of this item would give approval to the John Hay Partners Board in partnership with the John Hay Elementary Foundation to initiate a self-help playground project at John Hay Elementary that may exceed $250,000.
I second the motion.
General Counsel is coming to the dais.
Yeah, Noel Tree, General Counsel, sorry to interrupt, but I think what you want to do is read the actual motion language that's in the bar themselves as opposed to what's on the agenda, because those capture things a little bit differently than the agenda title.
I'm sorry, we should have snagged him before he left. Okay.
I move that the school board accept the gift of playground improvements from the John Hay Partners Board and John Hay Elementary Foundation as described in the Board Action Report.
And I'll second the motion.
I need questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues, please. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues. Director Geary?
Just always want to take the opportunity to express our appreciation of these types of partnerships and gifts, and I think with Director Harris acknowledge that we have still work to be done to make sure that we are providing good playgrounds equitably throughout our district, and so it is always a reminder, but I do express my gratitude.
I will take advantage of the segue. Huge thank you to the community at John Hay that raised these funds. However, we have Title I schools, high-need schools in this district who are playing on asphalt. We have an opportunity to address that in Bex 5 planning. We've been assured that that is happening, and that the Meng Company is doing a deep-dive survey on the status of playground equipment, how long it's been since it's been replaced, safety issues, whatever improvements are there, so we will have data to work with. But part of my extreme frustration is that this issue has not gone through the race and equity tool for our 104 schools. Part of my extreme frustration is that Highland Park, in my district, mere blocks from my home, has received a number of grants from both the city and the county, and we are unable to come up with the funds to seal the deal and to allow them to break ground. And we are truly a city of have and have-nots, and it is up to us to figure out a way out of the box. Associate Superintendent Dr. Flip Hernan, did you wish to say a few words?
Again, I appreciate, as Board Directors have pointed out, the ability for communities to come together and enhance their school, and I also wholeheartedly agree with President Harris's comment about trying to get some equity into our programs. I did commit to Director Harris a short-term solution, and I'm going to be getting her that, meaning a funding stream that hopefully we can get some playgrounds addressed before Bex 5 is voted on and there's money coming. It's not going to address a ton of them, but hopefully we'll be able to address a few of them to take advantage of that situation.
And I'll share a conversation I had with a city council member who said, "I'm not getting the answers I need and want from Dr. Hernan. Who do I elevate it to?" I said, "Well, the gentlemen that are above Dr. Herman would be Deputy Nielsen and Superintendent Nyland, but unless you found them the printing press, good luck with that." But you can do this, I said, "We don't operate on the same kind of system that the city council does." And it's a really unique scenario when really good people want really good things to happen, but they don't appreciate the constructs where we work. The lack of money, the process issues, and balancing the needs of all 104 schools. So anytime you have an opportunity to advocate for A, more money, and B, for more partnerships that we can actually step to the table and take advantage of, and matching funds, et cetera, I hope we take advantage. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Director Geary? Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Scheck.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Number two, approval of agreements adding an adaptive cycling and pedestrian component to the SDOT Let's Go Bike and Pedestrian Safety Education Program. This came to CNI December 12th. Member of CNI to stand in, Director Berkstedt. It appears in the agenda, it came with a recommendation for approval. Director Geary?
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute contract attendments with both Cascade Bike Club and the Seattle Department of Transportation in the amount of $337,074 in the form of the draft amendment attached to the School Board Action Report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues. Director Pinkham?
It was brought up in public comment about how we're looking to be going into these kind of things about bicycle safety, and then does that contradict what we're doing with the student assignment plan, where we're now making what could be an easily bike ride to school now a bus ride or other kind of transportation? How are we balancing these two?
Did you wish to ask that of a specific director, sir, or staff member, sir?
Well, whichever staff member is involved with this contract, I guess, it'd be good.
Lori Dunn, the Physical Education and Health Literacy Program Manager. As far as balancing with the student assignment, we're educating all of our children on how to navigate the environment, educating all third, fourth, and fifth graders on bike and pedestrian safety, which then will carry over into the lifetime when they become drivers and movers in our community. To answer your question specifically, I believe if we educate our children to be educated adults, that will help, but to answer your direct question, I'm looking at a balance, to be honest with you.
Director Geary?
On this particular motion, I do want to call out the adaptive aspect of it, and that we are expanding the contract to make sure there's an element of inclusiveness for all of our students is highly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Director Pinkham?
So, as this is coming up as part of the Pedestrian Safety and Education Program, I think maybe one of the issues that are coming up, well, Lincoln was, as it's becoming a school now, there was not necessarily any safe bike lanes or something right now. I know Burt Gillen Trail, but it's still not necessarily easily accessible. Could this possibly then help maybe work with the city to make better bike paths to our new schools?
Definitely. Within the partnership with Seattle Department of Transportation, Cascade Bike Club, and the Seattle Public Schools, that collaboration and community agreement is looking at how do they, how do our students navigate the environment that they live in, whether it be in Ballard or in the Rainier Beach area? I think there's lots of possibilities, but we're educating our students and in the long term, saving lives.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, number three. Award a three-year contract for Hobson's Naviance for new college and career readiness software solution, services, and support. This came to Ops on June 15th, prior to your arrival, Madam Chair.
This came to Ops...
Director Geary was on Ops on June 15th.
Yep, I came to Ops on June 15th, and was moved forward to the Board for consideration. I think it's clear that this is an issue that has brought a lot of discussion, and may still.
Okay.
So, I move that the Seattle School Board authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Hobson's Naviance in the total amount of $594,066.63 over three years for a career and college readiness software solution in the form of the draft agreement attached to the School Board Action Report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
I see Mr. Perkins coming to the dais. Could Assistant General Counsel Ronald Boyd come up as well, because I think we have a number of things to talk about with respect to the privacy aspects, and specific contract questions with respect to things like weekend, what's the word, responsiveness? The Board has heard a great deal feedback about this issue. Additionally, social media is lighting up over it as well, and I hope that you have stayed tuned with those concerns. So, keeping the time in mind...
Yes, Madam President.
...give us a nutshell and see how many of those issues you can bullet point for us.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very grateful for the opportunity. Caleb Perkins, Director of College and Career Readiness. I appreciate this opportunity because, as we shared in previous meetings, there's a great deal of support for providing this tool of Naviance to all schools, because it has the promise of providing equitable access to a wide variety of resources that could facilitate students' exploration and even access to college and careers. Since our last meeting on November 15th, our last formal discussion as a whole group, we have followed your guidance and developed a webpage with a number of pieces of information and all the steps that we're trying to take to ensure the very important questions around data security and student privacy are addressed, and we even go into the seven specific questions that were raised at that particular Board meeting. We very much appreciate your advocacy and input on that, and we believe we've taken every step we can without compromising the functionality of the tool to ensure that this is at this point the plan to provide, very valuable tool, while still giving an opportunity to opt-out for those families who still have concerns. The only other note I'll make is that the amount is now $594,000. That's the total number of known costs, and we're continuing to negotiate some other smaller items to make sure we maximize our value with this contract. With that, we have John Kroll, who's also our Chief Technology Officer, and as you mentioned, Ronald Boyd here to address some of the specific questions you have.
Do we have specific comments, questions, concerns from the Board? Director Mack?
Your presentation or discussion might get to this, but I wasn't here for the original discussion. I've read through, I've had conversations around this. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the opt-out process. If I'm understanding this system effectively, it's a tool which identifies profiles of some sort of students, and that those are then shared with third parties. And as a parent, I recently started thinking about the fact that we've provided all of our students with emails and access to a OneDrive, but that was, I was never told that was happening, and I wasn't asked about that happening. Now, I believe in technology, I think it's great, but as a parent, I have with my 10-year-old daughter, I have a contract with her that I always have passwords. She doesn't have access to social media, because these are things that, you know, can create lasting damage over time. So my concern around Naviance is a profile with information that's shared with other third parties that I'm wondering, A, does it have parental permission from the start to engage in it? We require parental permission for testing of some things, so there's no parental, if there is no, that's my question on that piece, and the second piece is, what's the mechanism for that profile, whatever information came out, maybe being changed or fixed later on if it's not an accurate assessment anymore, or pulled back and deleted? I mean, how do students and parents have the right to do that? So, yeah, my two questions are around parental permission, and then the ability to perhaps correct or change the information once it's out there.
So, very much appreciate the questions. So, what I want to first be clear about is we share the concerns and the interest in making sure we do everything we can to maintain student privacy and data security, and so there's a lot of steps we're taking, and I'll let others elaborate on how any third parties, which are a relatively few number, and they're only the ones that I think, we think are most valuable, for example, like the Common Application where you apply to all colleges, like Parchment, which allows us to upload transcripts in a way that makes the counselor's ability to connect kids with colleges much more, much easier. We're only doing that with certain third parties, and then even with those third parties, taking many, many steps to ensure that they follow the same stringent rules and stringent guidelines that we've put in place that, again, Ronald and John can speak to. So that's on one side. On the how students participate, we are proposing that students that are 13 and over will be, they obviously have the option to opt-out at any point, but that the default be that they be opted in because of the concern about equity. We want to make sure every student who could benefit from these resources will have that access, and that means that we have a commitment and a need to make sure that we're providing a lot of information to parents about what this tool is, why this resource is helpful, why so many other districts around the state and around the country have found it so valuable, and how it's helped districts. So I think the commitment that I share with my colleagues is how to do the job around information, so you're not facing the situation that you just addressed, where there are other things that you found out about after the fact. And so that commitment is there. At the same time, we want to make sure we're being equitable in our approach to this, and that's why we're going with the current approach to opting out.
Other questions, comments, or concerns? Director Pinkham and Director Geary?
And Director Patu?
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess whenever we have these kind of new systems, then I guess I would have a little bit hesitancy of that you're saying the default is opt-in. So then now we're putting more on parents to then go in and opt them out versus maybe we should ask them first before we opt everyone in, that we at least get feedback from their parents if they want such a thing or not, because yes, it's maybe more work on our part, but I think that's the due diligence we have to do before we say, "Okay, you're in," unless you decide to be out. I don't agree with that process.
Director Geary, Director Patu, and Director DeWolff, in that order.
We've spent a lot of time talking about those kinds of issues, because Director Burke and I met with the team to go over, I think at least twice, and we've talked to some of the executive officers at Naviance or that are running the program. And the big balance around all of this is this is a tool that really maximizes kids that perhaps don't have parents who can help them navigate the system for any number of reasons, and that may or may not opt-in, may or may not have the language abilities to fully understand the question, may not get to it in a timely manner, may, for whatever reasons. And then the question becomes, if for some reason that family falls through the cracks, then does that child, that student not get access to this tool, when really the whole point of getting the tool is to start creating those kinds of access? It's not going to be probably, you know, for my student, who I will do a lot of that work and have the resources to do it. It's going to be for the student who's probably on his or her own, as a first-generation person going through this, that's navigating a lot of it. And I don't mean to patronize or be condescending to the idea that these parents can't, won't, may not. I'm not trying to have low expectations of their participation, but I also want to be practical, and certainly we need to continue this conversation, and we talked about that. And we need to come up with a technology plan that really deeply engages around communities about what the appropriate level of engagement and opt-in and access to these students. I don't want to see us putting up barriers to some students when we see droves of students, and these may be the same kinds of students that are accessing all this stuff, all these technologies, all these social networking things, and their parents, and they're doing all the translating of things from the phone to their parents in the first place, so they're out there and navigating that world already. And so it's, from my perspective, it's a real balance, but it's one that we have to continue to have conversations around and come up with a plan and a philosophy so that we can guide our principals in instructing our teachers on how they're going to interface with students around all these different technologies, because this is one of many, many, many that our kids are interfacing with.
Director Patu, and then Director DeWolff, and I'll wrap up the questions, comments. Thank you. Is this a new contract, or is it a contract that we actually have used before?
This is a new contract. We have not worked with Naviance previously as a district.
So, what is the success for this contract? I mean, is there any background on why we chose this contract?
Yes, so thank you for the question, and that helps. I know that there's been a number of conversations that not everybody's been a part of, just a couple pieces. One, there was a rigorous RFP process where a number of possible tools were vetted by family, by parents, by students, by counselors, by teachers, and this particular tool, Naviance, was deemed as the most hitting all the marks in terms of what we're trying to do in terms of providing access to college and career supports. That plus our research on what surrounding districts have done, if, when talking, for example, to Everett, and what they've been able to do, and seeing the college application rates go up significantly since they've implemented Naviance, as well as other districts. They've also been able to use this tool to target specific students who have historically had lower rates of applications and been able to provide them with more supports. So it's from that, as an equity tool, when each district we talk to, they say this has helped with their efforts to be more equitable in terms of making sure students have access to college and career options. That's what has been most compelling.
Keep going, Director Patu. So, are we presently using this right now? I mean, is it already, is it in use, or no?
No, we have, not as a district, and not, to my knowledge, any individual schools. So, no, there's a...
So you're just asking for approval tonight?
Correct.
To use this?
Correct. Based on prior conversations that we've had with committee members as well as...
All right, thank you. Director DeWolff?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions from some emails I received. One of them is about, is there more information that's going to be collected, maybe outside of what colleges might want to see, whereby an unintended consequence might be that it would pose a real risk of unaccountable discrimination? Whether, is there other data around race or ethnicity, or other types of things that might open us up for discrimination if we're providing more data? Or kind of what is the scope of the data that we are inputting into this?
This is a topic that came up in prior meetings, so I'll share what I know, and if John would like to add, that would be helpful as well. So the basic is that we are trying to be very judicious with what data we share. We're only sharing what is absolutely essential to help the student use the tool, so for example, in applying to college, what that information would be. We are also putting strict requirements to both Naviance and any other of the Common Application, for example, to make sure that they don't share that data and that they would be in violation of contract if they did. Again, I won't speak into the contract language, Ronald could get into more details, but there's a lot of checks on the use of data, and we're doing everything we can to limit that. So your specific question is a good one. We believe we're taking every step we can think of to ensure that student data is treated appropriately.
And my second question is, there is criticism, or there's another email, I'm going to make it sound widespread, just around, you know, this is a big chunk of money. Do, has there been a cost-benefit analysis of what would actually be, would it be more beneficial just to put more counselors in our schools and actual human, or is there, you know what I mean? That's my question.
John Kroll, Chief Information Officer. The funding source for this application is from BTA4, and it is specifically for technology, it's not for more counselors. So it's money meant for, that was planned for to buy software.
Thank you.
I'm going to take the opportunity for that segue. Perfect timing, thank you, sir. Since I haven't asked this particular counselor for permission to read the email, even though all of our emails are fascinating... all of our emails are fascinating reading and public disclosure, this really struck a chord with me. And I recall Associate Superintendent Tully, two years ago, having conversations in the boardroom at our seven o'clock meetings, why do we not have the tools to assist our children? And why does Bellevue Foundation pay for it? And why don't we have that? And how can we ethically force our counselors with a 1 to 450 ratio to keep doing things with the hammer and the chisel? And I'm going to read this quickly, but this is why I'm voting for this. Now, am I a data-rabid person? Absolutely. The fact that when a big data company went through bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy judge in New York City decided that parents and families didn't own money, and they monetized it, and they sold it as an, as an asset of the bankruptcy, is horrifying to me. My understanding from Assistant Counsel Ronald Boye is that's not going to happen with this contract. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say that it should never happen with this contract. In my experience with the school district, I'd say that this is the only contract that has been so meticulously looked at. We have looked at every single word multiple, multiple times. We've added every available option as far as adding additional protections to the data. We have liquidated damages built into the contract. You know, I would say that there's always an element of trust when you enter into a contract that kind of is at its basis, but the actual clauses of this contract, I can't think of anything that hasn't thought of. You know, our DOTS team has done an excellent job with their experience and knowledge, kind of guiding us into developing a contract that is as secure as possible. You know, when we were dealing with technology, obviously, I have to rely on our experts to identify, you know, these are open areas that need to be addressed. All those things have been addressed. And I feel confident that of any contract that we have of this type, that this one has been the most thought out and the most meticulously detailed, as far as every sort of worst-case scenario, it is addressed. And this earlier today, just as an aside, I was thinking of, you know, what else could potentially happen here that isn't addressed? And I honestly couldn't think of anything. So I do feel secure that it's as good as it's going to get. And of course, I can never take away all risk, but I think the risk is as minimal as possible.
Okay. And then let me read this really quickly, if you'd give me the space to do that, because I found this to be extraordinarily profound. This is from a head counselor in a high school. Please don't ignore the facts and bring a platform like Naviance to our district. Don't put off another day of signing this contract because of misinformation. Transparency, period. As a school counselor for the past 18 years, I have used Naviance for about seven years, when I was a counselor at a different high school. The counselors researched and reviewed multiple platforms like Naviance. We've visited multiple capitalized private and public schools in our area that already had Naviance. We loved it, and the schools loved Naviance, too. At some point, the district told Garfield in 2007 to stop using Naviance. A little history lesson here. Well, now it's 10 years later, 2017, and we have no capitalized database. For the past 10 years, I have sent tens of thousands of transcripts and school reports by snail mail, or have entered them in multiple databases, and sometimes a dozen times just for one student. I've advertised and signed students up for scholarships by paper. I have done graduation credit checks by paper for all 450-plus of my students. My students complete their high school and beyond plans on paper. We need to wake up, folks, and join everyone else in the world who conducts these sorts of actions online. It is truly embarrassing when a college wants me to send a transcript electronically, and Seattle Public Schools has no platform to do this. I have personally sat on multiple committees to choose a new database for Seattle Public Schools, and the team gave multiple recommendations. I am so upset that the school district is delaying Naviance or anything like it once again. How many committees do I need to be on? How many emails do I need to send the superintendent or to the school board? How many administrators do I need to meet with again and again and again? Justify, they can't pass on my pleas. I hope the parents in my community can advocate for Naviance. It is long overdue. Excuse me while I go and upload another transcript. Director Mack?
Having not been a part of this conversation, and having concern around the parental notification, the ability to opt out, who are the third parties? Can you describe specifically what is the direction, or what notification will be provided to parents when this is started up? Is there something that's going out that says, because in my mind, I'm thinking, it needs to say, your child is going to be accessing this for these purposes. This is how you opt out if you don't want to do it. Very clearly say that. And information will be released, too. And then the fourth thing is that question about how do they correct information?
Yeah.
So can you, can you assure me that those four things have been and will be implemented in terms of parental notification?
What I can, what I can say is that the webpage that we developed and the Frequently Asked Questions page that we put together to address most of what you're raising, I think you're raising some additional points that we could add additional details to, and we were committed to doing that. But the Frequently Asked Questions document that is on a public site now, public page, includes things like the process for opting out, and includes other details on how, on what, you know, the rationale for the resource. I think, given the interest from the board and the clear direction from the board tonight, clearly there's, there needs to be a commitment, and I have that commitment, to make sure the information, and we leverage all of the available communications tools to notify parents of this, of this tool before we launch it in this fall.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment that not everybody has internet access, even if they might have it on the phones, or having it only, and that sending, literally, at the beginning of the year, we still send paper home because it's a way to communicate. So I don't know where we're at in terms of comments and questions, but I'm wondering if there's a way to suggest an amendment or something that would clarify that there would be detailed parental notification of these four points, not just the website? Should I suggest an amendment to that effect?
Mr. Perkins, would you consider that a friendly amendment? And Mr. General Counsel, can we backfill this one? Scrivener implementation?
I think you'd want to make a motion so it's clear what's being added, and have a second to that, and then go through a vote on the amendment.
And debate the amendment, and then go back to the main motion. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Just so the record's clear as to what, what the, what the new obligation will be, so staff is clear on what they need to do to follow through.
Director Mack, the floor is yours.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to approve the contract with Naviance, that the district would be required to provide parental notification prior to students using the software, which would include how to opt out, who are the third parties, and how to correct or change any data or information that has been collected.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
The motion to amend is on the floor. Do we have questions, concerns, or comments? Director Geary?
Do you see any impediments to implementing this mo, what's being asked in this motion?
Needless to say, since it's a new motion, there's, I'm trying to think through all the potential implications. The two, three, and four seem very reasonable. In fact, they're, they're largely addressed in the Frequently Asked Questions, although I think number four, correcting information, could be better spelled out. The number one piece, I just want to make sure, we're back to General Counsel Treat's point about the commitment of parental notification. I think, you know, leveraging all our available tools to notify families, including paper, sounds, sounds reasonable. But again, if there's more detail to that than I'm not thinking of, that's the only pause you hear in my voice.
I have a point of inquiry. Who will be doing the notifying? Which department is going to take responsibility for developing the community engagement plan? And who's going to pay for it? And when is this going to happen, if we were to pass this amendment and the motion? Director Geary?
Go ahead, Ms. Perkins. So the, the work is owned, we're the business owner, if you will, the College and Career Readiness Team, which is part of teaching and learning. So in that respect, we will own the implementation and the working with Carrie Campbell's team and any number of other folks to ensure that we do the notifications that are required. In terms of the specific budget and specific items, that's something that, some of that is outlined in the contract, and some of that perhaps could bear additional detail, but that's harder to speak to from here from the podium.
Director Mack?
Director, here's, really, all I'm, all I'm thinking of is, you know, a printout of the fact that's online, that's very specific, and it's deliberately sent, or an email. Like, I don't think, I don't think it has to be that, you know, like a really complicated communications plan. It just needs to be not only on the website. It needs to be something that's specifically sent out at the beginning of the school year, or whenever it is that these students are going to be engaging in it.
That's not what your motion said, that it'll go out at the front of the school year. Your amendment uploads it before we implement Naviance, and my understanding is...
That wasn't my intention, I'm sorry.
Okay. So that won't happen, then, before we go live on Naviance, should this amendment and the motion pass? Is that correct? If we do the first-of-the-year school packets?
Can I, oh, yeah, can I clarify?
Please.
I don't personally have a preference on whether or not it would be the first-of-the-year school packets, or if it would be just before it's rolled out. I don't, I don't have a preference. And I don't, I didn't intend that to be hard and fast, just that it be done.
Director Geary?
During our discussion around the FAQ and the opt-out process, and I don't necessarily need this to be part of the motion, as long as we all think it's worth putting in there as well, and it is part of, I believe, the FAQ, but it's the idea around, in notifying of the right to opt out, I think it's also important to notify the limitations on the services that then can be provided, so that you're not thinking you're going to get something different that will replace all of the functionalities of Naviance if you opt out, because I don't think we can do that. So I just think that should be clearly part of any opt-out notification, and I believe that that has been made part of the FAQs online, or we discussed that.
Director DeWolfe?
Well, so it sounds like an email, maybe some sort of a paper thing, maybe a robo-call?
Okay. My point in bringing this up, and I'm a very specific point in bringing this up, I don't want to micromanage how we do community engagement. But if we're talking about notification and opt-in and opt-out, that's really critical. If we're talking about folks without computers, that's really critical. If we're talking about the communications team, who is being beat the heck out of because other departments don't have specific folks to do their work, that's not nice, and frankly, it's not fair. So I want to be real clear when folks bring their portfolios to the dais, that when the Community Engagement Task Force says "community engagement," they really meant it. Again, I don't want to micromanage it, but I'm also tired of not thinking things through from a fiscal and a bandwidth note, because if we work together and we're real clear with each other, we can do so much better. That's my rant. Rant over.
Good evening, Carrie Campbell, Chief Engagement Officer. So I will, our team will support in making sure that we have a clear opt-out. I think it's a great idea. I'm glad it was brought up. I think we can absolutely do it. I would recommend Paperbase and seeing how we can bundle it together with some other information that I want to get to all of our families, because we would also need to translate it. So I'm not worried about the workload. This is something that we do all the time. We can support.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, let's go to the amendment and the roll call, please.
Director Mack? Director Patu?
Aye.
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
Let's go back to the motion as amended. Roll call, please.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
A reluctant nay.
Director Mack?
Oh, I guess you can come back to people. Duly noted, but I'm aye.
Aye. Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
A hesitant aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion as amended has passed with a vote of five to one.
Thank you. Number four, approval of the 2018-19 Transportation Service Standards. Went to Ops December 7th for consideration, and we have a time check here of 8:10. We are on number four of the action items. And we have eight introductions. We have 10. We have an additional six action items this evening. So, because I'm so subtle, keep it short. Thank you.
Do you want me to move?
Please.
And we're on, I move that the school board approve the 15 volunteer and two alternates listed on the document titled Disciplinary Appeal Council 2018 to 2021, to serve a three-year term on the disciplinary appeal council.
Can we skip one?
Oh, I'm sorry, because it's...
We're on number four.
I apologize. It's not, sorry. I move that the school board approve the recommended transportation service standards attached to the board action report for the 2018-2019 school year, and authorize the superintendent to implement the standards with minor modifications as necessary.
And I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns? We had a rich, excuse me, Director of Ops, Chair of Ops.
Thank you. President Harris, the, Ms. Magvoi, if you could just very quickly say the changes that were made between intro and action?
Thank you, yes. I just want to highlight that we did add, based on the conversation at the last, very rich discussion at the board meeting, the number five, which relates to Genesee Hill. And I'll read that so that the board is aware of what we have added. Genesee Hill elementary students enrolled during the 2017-18 school year, that reside in the boundary revision proposal, Scenario F, change area out and outside the Genesee Hill walk zone, will receive district-provided transportation through the 2022-23 school year.
Other questions, comments, or concerns from my Other questions, comments, or concerns from my colleagues? Director Geary?
No.
Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director DeWolff.
Transportation.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Number five, approval of the disciplinary appeal council appointees. This went to Ops on December 7th for?
Ops. Consideration?
As I read before, I think I've already moved this. I move that the school board approve the 15 volunteers and two alternates listed on the document titled Disciplinary Appeal Council 2018 to 21 to serve three-year term on the disciplinary appeal council.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Mr. Boye, Assistant Counsel, presented with a rich discussion and intro, if I recall correctly. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, the roll call. Excuse me, I didn't see you. You've got to be quick.
I'm in your line of sight, or out of it, I guess.
Director DeWolff, please.
I just had one question around on page two. It says student population, kind of gives ethnicity, and it says for our students, Asian-American students, it says 15 percent, and there's disparity, probably the only disparity there with the proposed appointees being 6 percent. So my question's going to be a little two-part, but more broadly, does this include folks that are immigrant or English not as their first language appointees? And that kind of triggered my question, so I just want to be curious about that.
And I would—I don't want to call out specific people as far as their specific citizenship or ethnicity, but I can count and I can tell you how many. There are currently four nominees on the list who were immigrants to the United States and came here to, came as English language learners.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director DeWolff.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number six, adopting resolution number 2017/18-12 to approve the purchase of 18-acre parcel located at 13001 MLK Junior Way South. Came to Ops October 5th.
For approval.
I move that the board adopt resolution number 2017/18-12 approving the purchase of certain real property pursuant to the purchase and sale agreement attached to this school board action report with any additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to conduct the district's due diligence and implement the agreement.
I second the motion.
We had a rich and thoughtful discussion in intro. Because this was a real estate deal, we have also had executive sessions previous to that time. I need questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues. Director Geary, please.
It's my understanding that we have initiated the due diligence. Do we have any update on that?
General Counsel Noel Treat coming to the dais.
Yes, due diligence is underway. We have a complete team to look at a broad range of potential issues with the property. Due diligence is going to—assuming you approve the agreement tonight, due diligence will extend for another several months beyond tonight. And if we do see a major red flag, we would then be in a position to terminate the agreement if that was the decision. But due diligence will take some additional time, and we will keep the board updated as that progresses.
I have a question for Associate Superintendent Dr. Herndon. You were here in the room when we heard public testimony about this issue. Can you address some of those concerns, please?
So this agenda item in contract is merely for the property purchase. So anytime we go through these phases, there'll be additional contracts for additional work on that particular property, but this is just for the property procurement.
The comments were a little more pointed than that, if you recall. Can you address them?
So a couple of those other items, that's part of the due diligence phase. That particular property has limited capability, which is why it's probably not being developed. The property wouldn't be while it has views. It's not property that would be suitable for building multifamily housing or a hotel or anything like that on there. Different story as far as parking goes, which is why we're going through the due diligence phase. And again, as we go through this, we'll figure out if there are any issues that can be remedied, and if there are, we'll have to put a price tag on it. And if there are not, and there's too much of a red flag, then as Counsel Treat had mentioned, that's our prerogative to then terminate this particular agreement.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Patu.
So is this property actually $4 million exactly?
That's what the cost of this property procurement is, yes, for this contract.
And so the property actually will fit all our buses?
That's what we're going through the due diligence phase of right now. So that's our hope, is that it will fit the buses that we need on there. But that's part of the due diligence, to make sure that there's enough space on there. And if there's anything we have to do to the ground to make sure that we can park all the buses there, that we are able to do that as well.
So you're doing all that before you purchase the property?
Correct. That's the—as Counsel just mentioned, that's our due diligence phase that's going to take another couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Scheck, roll call, please. Up, excuse me. Director Pinkham.
So then, we will hear back from you after this due diligence, before you actually go through this purchase. So we're not approving the purchase right now. We're just saying, yes, you have the authority to go and do your due diligence to see that this $4 million is worth it.
So I think it's my understanding, Counsel can tell me if I'm not, this would be—if everything pans out, this is the ability to purchase that property, we wouldn't have to come back to you and ask for that purchase again. However, we will keep you up to date. If there are any red flags and we see that we're not able to proceed accordingly, then we would tell you this is not a deal that we can follow through with because there's too much that we would need to do to mitigate, or it doesn't meet all the needs. For instance, if we were to go through the due diligence and we find out we can only park 100 buses there, that obviously doesn't meet our needs, and that's one of the major reasons why we're purchasing this property. So we would update you at any time we run into a red flag that might impair our ability to meet any of the stated needs of this property.
And any related profit price increase? Would you have to come back to the board for a new purchase price? Like, let's say what was brought up in testimony that the seller, oh, sorry, I can't remove the concrete as I'd hoped, and then that does that fall on us to then do that removal?
So again, this is the purchase of the property, so there may be some things that we have to mitigate for the property, but that's what we'll find out during the due diligence phase. But the purchase-sale agreement that we've already gone into basically locks in the price of purchasing this property.
Again, the case where the seller was expected to remove something from the site and they don't, does that then fall on us to responsibly?
That's where we would have to go through our agreement that we have with the seller to figure out if they're meeting what they had stated they would do during the sale.
Just looking at it, it sounds like the seller is in kind of not a very good financial situation. If having to sell this and back taxes, just be kind of cautious, you know, boy, if we're saying that he's going to do this, or the seller, and then it turns out that they can't.
Superintendent Island, please.
Just kind of as broad background, we—well, first of all, we certainly will do all of these things. We want to do due diligence, and we want to get good value for the school district. That said, this is a really good deal. We need a place to park buses. That's part of why we only have one bidder for our current bus contract, and we're hopeful that this will provide us a place to park the buses and therefore an ability to get more competitive bids for our contract services. And, I mean, we know this intuitively, but we've got cranes all over Seattle. They're simply—I mean, 18 acres, there is no place—I don't know, there might be one, but we certainly could not afford it. And we're going to get usable space out of 18 acres for our needs, or we won't buy it. But we're pretty confident that even with the due diligence, and if there are a few items that do cost more, it's still a very, very, very competitive price for the land that we've been unable to obtain for parking and servicing our buses, so.
Other comments, questions, or concerns? I had a question for General Counsel Treat. Does the court maintain jurisdiction while we do our due diligence?
One of the due diligence provisions that's required under the contract, as everybody might recall, this property is in what's called state receivership, which is essentially a state court bankruptcy-type proceeding. And we are requiring in the agreement that the seller go to that court and get court approval for this sale. It's going to—I think they have a motion lined up within the next couple of weeks, so that's a mandatory requirement of the agreement. Once the court approves the sale, what that essentially will confirm for us is that once the sale is consummated, the existing debt and tax liens and things like that will be completely discharged. So that is a requirement, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Yes. Director DeWolff.
Yes.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number seven, Bex 4 and BTA 4, Lincoln High School, approval of guaranteed maximum price to general contractor, construction manager contract P5084 to Leidig Construction, Inc. Ops December 7th?
For consideration.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute the final negotiated guaranteed maximum price as defined by RCW 3910370 for Lincoln High School Modernization Project Contract P5084 in an amount not to exceed $63,116—no. Yeah, 63—
Million.
No. $63,116,91, which includes alternates. 2B, pern, three-ply roofing, close pern. 5D, pern, east building, steam condensate piping, close pern. 5E, pern, east building boiler, close pern. 6B, pern, sprinkler pipe gauge, close pern. 6E, pern, JCI mechanical controls, close pern, comma, and 8A, pern, lighting controls, comma, excluding Washington State sales tax.
I second the motion. Period.
We had an extensive intro previously.
Open it up to questions.
Hello, good evening. Were there any additional changes between intro and action now that we should be aware of?
Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning. No, there were no changes on this bar between intro and action.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director DeWolff.
I just want to say great job to Director Geary for being able to read that after waking up at 3:00 to 4:00 this morning, so congratulations on that.
It made me recall that one person that used to make the sounds for all the quotation marks in print.
I'm going to give my mom a plug. She was a court reporter who used to have to read this stuff. So like, as I was speaking, I started having flashbacks to my childhood.
You have my sympathy. Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Patu.
Upstate.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director DeWolff.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of five to zero to one.
Number eight, Bex 4, Resolution 2017/18-1, Racial Imbalance Analysis for Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Projects. Project, singular. Ops December 7th?
herbal. I move that the school board approve Resolution 2017-18-1 certifying that the proposed Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Project will not create or aggravate racial imbalance as defined by WAC 392, 342, 025 as attached to the board action report.
I second the motion.
Mr. Best, we had a spirited conversation during intro on this with respect to degree of meeting the law and how much it would change. Did you hear public comment testimony on this issue? And did you want to respond to same?
Both Wing Luke Elementary School and Van Assault Elementary School are considered racially imbalanced schools. They will not be at the boundary adjustment that was approved by the school board in 2013 and is planned to be implemented in 2020 when the project is complete, will not aggravate the racial imbalance at either Wing Luke or Van Assault Elementary Schools.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, excuse me. Director Patu, please.
I guess my comment is not specifically to this particular contact, but I'm just a little concerned that we're moving Lincoln forward, and yet Rainier Beach still sitting and waiting for our—for modification. So I'm quite disappointed that that has not moved forward yet.
I will assure the board that we are working on Rainier Beach as a project in Bex 5. And it is being—undergoing master plan studies with Bissetti Architects, the school administration, staff, students, and community members. And they have participated in three meetings to date.
Thank you. Okay, we're on, however, the motion regarding racial imbalance for Wing Luke. Do we have questions regarding that? Director Pinkham, please.
Yeah, one of the comments that was shared was just as far as like, yes, we're saying that it isn't, but we haven't seen any data saying that, oh yeah, this is already racially imbalanced. I guess the public testimony was asking, hey, well then show us the data that is currently racially imbalanced versus just saying.
Okay, we can definitely provide you with that data, Director Pinkham. We do have it. It's what I looked at with Senior Project Manager Mike Scootack, so.
So do you think that probably would have been maybe a good idea to have in the background versus just saying that it's currently racially imbalanced, that it would have been nice and no, show us the data? I appreciate the comments, and that came up in public testimony for this, and yeah, maybe it was in other documents, but then for it not to be in the bar, I guess, not necessarily showing how racially imbalanced it is by definition, that it is currently racially imbalanced by—so just a little more information, I think, is what some people from the public are asking for.
So I do have the data in my bar, and I can tell you from an overall district standpoint, the district has a total percentage of minorities in 2016, 17, 53 percent, and— the district has a total percentage of minorities in 2016, 17, 53 percent, and Wing Luke Elementary School, the current boundary, is 96 percent. And with the proposed new boundary that would be approved in 2020, looking at that data, it stays at 96 percent.
Director Mack?
I'm not seeing that in the bar that's in front of us. You said it's in your bar?
No, I have the, I have the data as background information in my board.
In your folder for the, for.
Exactly.
Okay.
General Counsel, question, please. Can we move to attach these data points to the bars so that we make public record of it, sir?
Yeah, or you could, I mean, I think you could also just convey to staff that in the future you want to see that as part of these bars, but certainly you could do it as a motion as well. That's, that's up to your discretion.
I so move. We have a second.
Second.
Debate on the amendment to add the data. Questions, comments, concerns?
Just to clarify, are you, are you moving to add the data to this?
To this motion.
Action itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Director Geary?
Can we clarify what this racial imbalance analysis is and means, the value to the district? Because, again, it goes back to my experience that we opened the Decatur School with almost no discussion around racial imbalance, and yet we, I believe, are having this conversation because of a form we submit to the state with regard to our projects.
That's correct.
And so, explain to me again how we can make such huge movements in terms of our decisions with almost no discussion around racial imbalance, and yet we are, we end up every time this comes up engaging in a level of conversation that I, it always makes me wonder why this wasn't done for Decatur.
So specifically to Wing Luke, as Richard Best had outlined, no matter how you draw the lines around this particular bar, you're not going to bring it into racial balance. But drawing these boundaries does not aggravate the racial imbalance, which is what this particular bar says. We're not creating racial imbalance because it already exists. We're also not aggravating racial imbalance. It is remaining the same.
And we submit this report to who, for what purpose?
OSPI, it's part of the deform process.
And this deform process then results in?
Funding that comes from the state in the state capital assistance program. You will not get that money unless you submit all the forms in the deform process.
Okay.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, please take the vote on the amendment to add the data, please.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Geary?
Yes.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Main motion as amended, roll call, please.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Nay.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion as amended has passed with a vote of five to one.
Thank you. Number nine, BTA 3 and BTA 4, award contract K 1303 for purchase and installation of portable classroom modules, came before Ops, December 7th?
For consideration?
Oh, goodness. I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to, one, execute contract number K 1303 with Aries Building Systems LLC in the amount of $1,282,392, plus Washington State sales tax for the purchase, move-in, and setup of 11 modular classrooms, with any deletions and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract, and, two, execute a change order to this agreement up to an additional amount of $500,000 plus Washington State sales tax for purchase, move-in, and setup of up to eight additional modules if needed.
I second the motion.
I'm, we had a conversation in committee and maybe here as well about where these portables might be going.
So we're looking at placing these at numerous high schools. I'm going to look to, I know Ballard, Roosevelt, Garfield high schools, we're also looking at placing four portables at each of those high schools, four portables potentially at Madison Middle School, and two portables at Mercer. We know that we will need at this time to purchase 11 portables. We're asking for the board's permission to spend another five, up to $500,000 for the purchase, so as up to eight additional portables without coming back to you. We're waiting for data that we will get at the end of the open enrollment period. Then we will finalize our negotiations with Aries Building, let me just look, Aries Building Systems with the total amount of portables. So we have built some flexibility into this contract.
And also on page one, I think there's a, there's a correction that needs to be made because typically the capacity management actions is a action item that is approved first.
Correct.
Before we usually say yes to the portables and paying them.
Correct.
We're doing this in reverse. We are introing the capacity management action bar tonight, but this bar says that at the board meeting on January 31st.
Yes, we will be asking you to approve that, that board, that bar at the board meeting on January 31st. Director Mack, we opened bids on portables last year. I'm thinking, I'm going a little bit by memory, April timeframe, we had zero bidders, we scrambled the month of May. So we tried to move these portable bars into January. We had conversations with folks who we thought would bid our projects, they just said, you're too late in the queue. And we waited till April to bid because we were waiting until the open enrollment period. Now we're in front of the open enrollment period, but we're behind that capacity management bar. It is being introduced tonight.
Do we need to change the language here to say?
Yeah, it should be future tense rather than past tense.
And does that, that doesn't need amendment?
But it's not in your recommended motion, it's in the background information.
Okay, great, but that'll be corrected in the final version?
Well, this is the bar you're approving tonight, and again, it's, that information is not in the recommended motion that Director Geary just read. That information that is in past tense is in the background information.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Patu?
So I guess my question, this is for understanding, so the, the portables that we had voted on beforehand, those portables are, this is not the same portables, or have those already been utilized?
Those portables that you took action on in last, and I'm going a little bit by memory, it was April-May timeframe, Director Patu, we issued a contract with KCDA, they were all set last summer, with the exception of one that was late at Green Lake Elementary School, and I believe there are four that are late at Nathan Hale Elementary School, or Nathan Hale High School. With the exception of those schools, everything else has been placed, and that contract has been implemented. This is for work that we need to perform in the summer of '18 so that we're ready for the '18-'19 school year at the high schools that we're looking at placing these portables and the middle schools. I do anticipate that we'll be placing some portables at elementary schools, we're just refining that data and working with Ashley's team. We'll know more at the end of open enrollment.
So these portables actually includes those schools that you did not, Ashley, were able to?
No, those schools are still under the last contract. Green Lake was set under the last contract, and Nathan Hale will complete the last contract. These, this contract is for portables we will set in the summer of '18 for the '18-'19 school year. That's what this is for.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Number 10, BTA 3 and BTA 4, award contract K 1304 to relocate and set up portable classrooms at multiple school sites projects. Ops, December 7th?
For consideration?
I move that the Seattle School Board authorize the superintendent to execute contract number K 1304 with AccuSet Construction Incorporated in the amount of $449,799.55 plus Washington State sales tax for the relocation and setup of 15 portable classrooms at multiple school sites, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, or concerns for my colleagues? Director Mack?
Any changes since intro?
Yes, we put the cost in there since intro. We, this bids opened on January 10th. Director Mack?
Does it have the same amount as the previous one? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little confused here. Up to 4.51?
This is, this is to relocate 15 existing portables. The scope of this contract would include the teardown of the portable at the existing site to make it ready to move. It will include moving the portable to the new site, it will include a police escort of moving that portable to the new site, and then setup at the new, at the new site with the exclusion of utilities, are providing utilities, we provide the utilities through our facilities department to the portables.
Does it include building other classrooms? Does this, this amount includes the other capacity management stuff, or that's in the other bar?
No, it doesn't. That's the next bar that would be introduced tonight. That's where Latin Elementary School is included.
Okay, so this is just the moving of the portables?
This is just moving existing portables. They are moving nine from Schmitz Park, five from Washington Middle School, and one from Wing Luke.
Director Patu?
Did I hear you right and say that you also have to have a police officer to go with this?
Correct. There's police officers that accompany the portables when they're being relocated.
Is that a regular?
It was a new requirement as of last summer.
Okay.
Yep. It has not been a regular requirement, it was a requirement last summer, and we're doing it again this summer.
Now, why is that?
It's a City of Seattle requirement to move it in the public right of way. Director Patu?
No, I said with the police escort.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that has to be done now?
It will be done going forward, yes. That is a City of Seattle requirement to have them escorted.
And who pays for that? We do?
We do, yep.
Okay.
And probably at very high prices. Director Mack?
I just want to daylight a question of why, why is there such a big difference between the, what we know we're spending and 4.5 million? That's a pretty wide distance, so why is that?
Right, the 4.5 million includes furniture, it includes technology, it includes curriculum, and it includes the utilities to the portable that are not in these contracts that we're setting up that are performed by our facilities department. Director Mack? And then also the refurbishment of the classroom at Latin Elementary School. So that's why there's a difference between these two bars and the bar you're going to see at introduction.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, time check, Mr. Van Duser. It's 9:45. Excuse me, 8:45, blind in one eye, and that clock is a long way away. Where are we on our old-fashioned videotape? We have an additional eight introduction items.
We can record in segments of three hours, and it starts again after the recess, so that was around 7:20 or so, so we have until 10:20 or so.
So we're good. So do you want a stretch break for five or 10 minutes? Or, okay, I hear consensus, 10 minutes? We're taking a break, thank you.
You guys need to get your sea legs. Yes.